Roland Dykes, Vice Mayor Mike Proffitt.
Here.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Here.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Here.
Alderwoman Luanna Audinger.
Here.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Here.
City Attorney Terry Hurst.
Here.
City Administrator James Fincham.
Here.
Okay, now we'll next have the approval of the minutes from the previous meeting.
Mr. Vice Mayor, it's been pointed out that there was a slight typo in the minutes. There's a line there right at the first three talks after the roll call about who was present, who was not, and it says the official present was, and it should say that the official not present was. So, we will fix that, but would recommend the approval of the minutes pending that amendment, and we will fix that before it goes into the record.
We need a roll call, or we just need each one?
Motion and a vote.
Okay, well now I have a motion. Do I hear a motion? Do we approve the minutes?
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Minutes been motioned. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Bobby Knight, second. Alderman Knight.
Ask for a vote.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
None opposed? Ayes have it. Okay, we've got a proclamation trying to honor a couple of people, but I don't see them here. Chad Williams or Kendall Williams, neither one of them's here? Alderman Smith, if you would, just tell the people what it's about, this little bit.
I just want to thank Chad and Kendall both for, they helped with build the handicap ramp going into the disabled veterans building up there. Did a great job, but I appreciate all the hard work and time they put into that. Also, they helped with the flagpole. But, I just want to say thank you all so much. I wish they were here.
Just wanted to say thank you in public, but Alderman Smith's been the one spearheading that, and these boys have done a real good job just volunteering, doing stuff on their own. Just wanted to recognize them. If you see them, tell them thank you. Okay, we need a representative from the Cock County Library, presentation?
You'll come forward. Did you get everybody up there?
The rest of you, Alderman, and Alderwoman. Come here.
Looks like a big check.
You think that stand up?
Yes, sir.
Will I check up the wire, sir?
One, two.
One of the things, one of the things that's a very big plus for our city and county is our library. People does not understand, or if you've never been in it, or don't see how it's being used. It's a technical world anymore, and we're trying to do just a little something. We always still give them another donation. This is just helping with the roof, replacing it after the storm. They like a little bit of dirt, able to see that as many people use that library as much time. We appreciate what the library doing does. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Cash it.
Thank you.
Okay, next we'll have the word from our city administrator, reports administrator James Fincham.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Just a couple of things to report. We got a letter of approval from the comptroller on an inner fund transfer that we did to buy police vehicles between the drug fund and the general fund, and so that was approved by the comptroller, and I think that's the final thing we have to get approved. Does that close everything out on the budget? Okay, so that was the final approval on our budget. Also, on Thursday morning at 10 o'clock, Tina and Gary and I are going to go up and go through the Tanner Building and kind of check, look at the progress that has been made up there. Tina and I haven't been up there. Gary goes up there regularly. Tina and I haven't been up, and I want to extend an invitation to any of the board that would like to, to meet us up there, or go with us up there if you'd like to go through and look at the progress and kind of see how it's moving along. But we will be doing it at 10 o'clock Thursday morning, so y'all are welcome to join us and go through and take a tour. That's all I got.
I'm glad you're taking Tina with you, because she's the purse strings of this.
Right.
She's got to be satisfied for it.
Right. We've already, she and I, we signed the check today, so yeah, she's wanting to go look, make sure, see what she made for it.
Not a girl, Tina. Need to send my wife through your program sometime. Okay, appointments aboard the commissioners committee? We haven't got anybody on that. Okay, the Tanner Preservation Alliance? Charlene, you got anything?
We haven't had a meeting.
Okay, do.
After I left the building, we're being on Thursday, and I'm breaking in.
Good. I've seen a lot of work going on there, hauling a lot of stuff off, what all they're doing. I didn't notice that much stuff in there. They could tire out. Okay, old business, unfinished business. Mr. Hurst, do you like to read what?
Yes, sir. This old business is ordinance number 2019-07, an ordinance amending the City of Newport Municipal Code Title 10, Animal Control, Chapter 2, Dogs and Cats, Section 10-207, Number of Animals. This would be the second reading. We need a motion and vote.
Do I hear a motion? We approve this ordinance?
I make a motion to approve the ordinance.
Motion been ordered, okay. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Ms. Aldiner, second. Okay, roll call.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Audinger.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Proffitt.
Yes. Okay, read the next one there.
This is the first item on new business, would be first reading of ordinance number 2019-08, an ordinance amending the City of Newport Municipal Code Title 15, Motor Vehicles, Traffic and Parking, Chapter 9, Speed Limits, Section 15-903, Speed Limit in School Zones and Near Playground.
Do I hear a motion? We approve that ordinance?
I make a motion to approve it.
Alderman Hanson, second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Audinger.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Proffitt.
Yes. Okay, the next item, sir.
Yes, sir. The next item is ordinance number 2019-09, an ordinance amending the City of Newport Municipal Code Title 16, Street and Sidewalks, Et Cetera, Chapter 1, Miscellaneous Adding Section 16-104, Blowing Mown Grass, excuse me, Blowing Mowed Grass Onto City Streets Prohibited.
What else want to do about that before we vote is just use common sense on this stuff, is all I asked, is just, we've got a lot more problems than this, and we don't want to nitpick things, but we just need to use common sense on things.
Well, one of the, Mr. Vice Mayor, one thing that was mentioned when we discussed it before we put it on the agenda, we, in the wording of the ordinance itself, it has in our, the question came up that night that, well, a lot of times you have to mow, you blow your grass out into the road, and then you blow it out, and are we going to stop and get on somebody that's doing that? And the answer to that is no. The way the ordinance is written, it says to have blown mown grass, weeds, or debris out into the street and left it. So, they would have to, they've shown that they, we would have to be able to show that it was their intent to leave it there. So, that means they would have had to quit mowing and put their stuff away, and now it's all still out on the road. So, you know, we're not going to get on anybody. We just had so many complaints this year about people blowing everything out into the road and leaving it. So, the leaving it part is the key. We're not, just because they blow something into the road's not going to be a violation. They have to leave it there.
Okay. Do I hear a motion? We approve that ordinance?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Hansel made the motion, second.
Second.
Ms. Aldiner, second motion. Roll call, please.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Audinger.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Proffitt.
Yes. Okay. You want to read that, Gary? You want to read it, you want to explain?
Yeah, I'll explain it. The resolution that was in your packet is for the corridor study, that we had the gentleman from Gresham Smith come twice this past year to do the presentation on the findings. The part of grant is for T.DOT to, for T.DOT to write that final check to them. We have to approve this resolution. Of course, it's not the end. We've still got to work with the county on a corridor management agreement, and try and steer the development out that way as it happens. But, this is sort of the last step to close the book, for T.DOT to close their books, and staff recommends that you approve the resolution.
Any questions to bed? Do I hear a motion? We approve that ordinance?
I make a motion to approve it.
Alderman Smith made the motion. Do I hear a second? Alderman Knight, second the motion. Roll call, please.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Audinger.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Proffitt.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work, Gary. Okay, the next item up for bid. Tim, I thought you were going to send Virginia up here. She'd had a ball bearing chasing you.
She said it was my job to do this.
We was having a little fun. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Doctor.
All right, this is, what we're trying to do is, we're trying to prepare, and I still have a hard time talking with all the work that's been done in my mouth, so sometimes I slur my words. It's sort of run together. We're trying to prepare for the SAFE program that we're doing, the same access point for everyone at the community center. So, in the process of the partnership in the chamber moving to the Tanner Building, which is coming up real soon, as you can see, we're, they're continuing to move forward, that we're asking for a part-time employment for 16 hours, Monday through Thursday, four hours a night. That would be from 5 to 9 o'clock. They would assist in taking the monies up, greeting people at the new entrance on the Cosby Highway side that I have presented you all, and of course, they'll be making $8 an hour. So, it's 16 hours a week, $8 an hour. We figure around $7,500 for a 365-day part-time job. So, they'll be what they'd call a part-time, but full-time employee, but they wouldn't get the benefits. And of course, the person that's doing that today is, will move to the daytime job, which will be a full-time position, which she already has, but will have operation hours. You know, we're one of the few departments that we operate from 7 until 9 o'clock. We don't have business hours, and this is a part of the SAFE program to establish business hours for the parks and rec and the community center. But it is a part-time job, 16 hours a week at $8 an hour.
Have you got people in mind, Tim?
It'll take us some time to advertise. It's a new position. Our city administrator, James Fincham, has guided me in the way that we need to go, and that is that we advertise this job, and since it's a new position, we can't use present applications, but we're going to advertise for the position, for the job. Plus, we've got to write the job descriptions, and it'll take us a good month to get to a point to where that we can actually start interviewing. Then hopefully, January, we can get a person in place, then that way we can get them trained and get ready for us when we have the space available for us in parks and rec.
Part-time positions are the hardest for us to fill.
That's what I heard.
We, Tim has another part-time position for maintenance, grounds maintenance over the park, and it's just tough to find somebody that wants to work evenings part-time. I remember, you know, it's another one of those things. You see help wanted signs all over town. You know, you used to, you could find a teenager or something that wanted to come in and do that kind of stuff, but anymore, they don't, you know, you just, nobody applies for these jobs, and it's just really tough to fill part-time jobs.
You got the money appropriated for it, haven't you?
Yes. We'll cover it. We'll cover it this year, then when we go into the new year, we'll be, not new year, but our new budget, we'll have to do, make some adjustments.
By the time we fill it, we'll be almost halfway through the year, so.
We need to vote on that.
Yeah, it's a new position. You all have to create new positions.
Okay. Do I hear a motion? We consider that part-time job?
I make the motion.
Alderman Hansel made the motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Alderman Knight, second the vote. Just all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, Tim.
Thank you, Council.
Yes, sir. Do you need staff there for the next thing, too? Mr. Doctor?
No, I'm sorry. We need to add, we need to, we've added an item to the agenda. I remember, we talked about the farmer's market grant.
Okay. I knew you'd add, but I didn't expect you coming in.
Just testing you, Tim.
That gave it to your job description.
I was testing you, Tim.
You want me to talk?
No, you talk. Go ahead, tell them what we're doing here.
Every year with the farmer's market, we have applied for a state grant that helps pay for the newspaper ads and the radio ads and some things like that. The state has changed how their, so that's what we're doing, with requesting approval to apply again. The state has totally changed the grant process for this coming year, which will be in the spring. And the way they've changed it, in the past, the way the grant was, we specified how much was going to WLIK, how much was going to WNPC, how much was going to the Newport Plain Talk, and a few other things. But this year, what they're going to do is they're going to give us additional funds, but they're not going to pre-designate how we spend that money, so that what I'm going to have to do is go to each of the venues that we advertise from and talk with them about what specific costs are going to be, and then do that. But first, we need to get approval to, we've sent in the, I think we've sent in, is Regina here?
She's here.
Okay. Anyway, what? I was going to say, we worked on the grant.
We haven't sent anything in yet without approval. We won't be sending anything in till they approve it. We don't, we can't put the cart ahead of the horse. So, that's what we're here for tonight, is approval to submit it.
Okay. And Regina and I spent several hours working on it the other day, because it was really confusing how the process was going, and it was new, and I don't think the people at the state knew how it was going either. But anyway, that's what we'd like to do. The grant is for $750, which is still not a lot of money, but hopefully, working with our local media, it will cover the costs. So, that's what we need approval for us to apply.
Y'all do a good job up there. I appreciate the job y'all do. The farmer's market means a lot to our city and county. We need to vote, okay. Do I hear a motion? We approve the grant for the farmer's market?
Make a motion.
Motion been made by Alderman Hansel.
I second it.
Ms. Luanna, her, second, her, you got married, didn't you? Ms. Aldiner.
His name's James.
It's too big a hurdle to be. All in favor, say aye. Ayes have it.
Yeah, I'll let Regina know tomorrow that you can get moving with it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Ready for me again, Coach?
It's going to be rough, but you go ahead.
Okay. To top, to make a long story short.
That's what we want.
Yeah. Which is, James has tried to coach me through this a little bit today. Our town went with Johnson Controls and built, or did some things with our air conditioning, lighting, and so forth. All right, so, we put in a new air handler and a new air conditioner at the community center, which is 40 years old, and of course, come August, we were faced with, I noticed that it wasn't operating correctly, so in September, first of September, we contacted Johnson Controls. Johnson Controls came to the community center to check out the air handler and the air conditioner, and found that we were, that compressors one and two had been grounded out and shorted out, which means that blew them up. Okay, now in return of this, the technician that found it contacted the manufacturer. The manufacturer says it's not a manufacturing malfunction, that it could be due to grounding out that caused it to blow the compressors on the air conditioner. All right, so in that process, we contacted our Newport Utilities. Newport Utilities sent their lineman out. They checked our platform transformer, our connections on the poles, and says we haven't had a sway or increase in utilities, that they were able to pull some information, the way their system is, where the electricity feeds through the meters, and we did not have any surges or sways. But somehow or another, we have grounded out two compressors, actually, it's four compressors, because we had some issues two years ago. We've had four TVs, five TVs that have blown, and four HDMI cords that run the camera system, and also, we've had a compressor on one of our drinks that we, drink machines that we use in our concessions. So, in return, we've contacted, or they submitted a replacement of the compressors, and that bid came in around $18,000. So, you know, he said, she said, who said, I said, I don't know. You ask me if, will it happen again? What we, what we're trying to assure is that there has to be some type of device, a surge protector for that unit that we're trying to search out for, to make sure that it doesn't take a surge on those compressors anymore, because that building, it can't operate on Unit 3 and 4 for the summer months. It's 36,000 square feet, and you've got to, you've got to have that Stage 1 that kicks in early in the morning, mid-morning, you've got to have Stage 2. The daytime, you've got to have 3, then the late evening, you've got to have that fourth one. It's 36,000 square feet, and...
What do we need to do?
We need to, we need to accept the bid for the replacement of the compressors.
Okay, y'all are still, I know, today, y'all still checking with the utility company for whatever, but we need to prove that right now and see how it goes.
What Tim has done is, we've asked each of these, these finger pointers to put something in writing, because, you know, it's not us, it's him. No, it's not me, it's, you know, and so, we're wanting documentation. Let them accuse somebody on paper, instead of just saying, "It's not us, the utility company blew it," and the utility company saying, "No, it's not us, it's the manufacturer," and then the manufacturer saying, "No, it's not us," and it's just going in a circle. And so, ultimately, we've got to replace it. It's just one of those deals that where something has happened, no doubt about it, and something caused it, and it's definitely electrical in nature, because it blew out too many things, and...
Been four of them, four compressors, seven more? We, actually, what, two years ago, we held money back from Johnson Controls due to a replacement of two compressors that our fire department found coming down the street, where it had blew a valve or something in there, and the oil was leaking out, so they went ahead and changed them at that point, because it contaminated the freon. And so, that's what we're worried about now, is the contamination of the freon again, adding to that cost. That's why the, Tina asked us to make sure to get labor and freon caused, but we may not need it. It could be less.
Do I hear a motion that we?
Coach, like, Tim, does Johnson Control bear any responsibility on this? Do I? I think they all do.
Because they say it's not, that it's been caused by an outside surge. Like, it was nothing that they did that created it. And the manufacturer says it's not, that the product is good, that something fried. Johnson Controls are going by what they said and saying, "Everything we did's good, something from the outside fried, electrical." So, the utility companies says they did it. So, act of God's, about all that's left.
Aren't they under warranty?
Yes, but they, but the manufacturer denied the warranty, because he says that it had been, it did not, the piece did not fail, that it was damaged by an outside influence of some kind, which had to be electrical in nature.
For it to get grounded, for it to get grounded out the way that it did, exactly. It was an outside, outside power surge.
If you ever figured out who's responsible, whatever, we can always come back.
I don't think you're going to be able to figure it out.
Right, but you're going to have to.
Because we've been going around with it for two months.
Approve the money.
I don't think you're going to figure it out. Everybody's going to point fingers at everybody else, and nobody's going to take responsibility, and you can't prove it, you know. We've been unable to come up with a way to prove one way or the other.
We just need to go ahead and prove.
We're going to have to replace them. It's just a sad thing. We got all this stuff that's blowing out up there, and something is causing it. And to say it's just magically happening, don't float with me, but that's basically where we're at.
This is probably apples and oranges, but a previous city administrator and a previous council approved this, and I hope I'll somewhere out of mine. We won't be for a long time. It's going to take a long time to pave the thing off. Yeah.
Just vote on consideration of replacing the compressor. Do I hear a motion that we?
Make a motion, will you?
Alderman Knight made a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Alderman Hansel, second. Need a roll call or just, all in favor, say aye?
We did a roll call.
Aye.
Hold a roll call, she said, on this one. Okay, go ahead, Ms. Tina.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Audinger.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Proffitt.
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Doctor. I'd like for the two representatives from the group in the high school up there, would y'all stand up this minute? Just want to recognize y'all, council from the high school? No, you two right here, you two students, yeah. Yeah, just one, leadership class, just wanted to tell you thank you for coming. Got you taken care of. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Now, before we start this next thing, you're about, we got comments from citizens. We've got several people, I think, that want to speak tonight. Now, it's been the whole time, you've got five minutes, and when five minutes are up, I don't care who you are, how important you think you I don't care who you are, how important you think your cause is, when five minutes is up, that's it. I've talked to five or six of you, who are going to speak, are you first, or Mr. Reagan?
I'm first.
Yes, sir. If you need, if you need, if you need to help, right here's the clock to watch.
I got you, buddy. We got that.
Take time.
That's not a problem at all. November 23rd, from eight till 12, there's two areas, the state fire marshal's office is coming in, and we're going to do a little bit of canvassing with smoke alarms. And so, our department, one area is around Morris Street over the park, the other area is around Graham Street. We're just door-to-door, walking around with smoke alarms that the state fire marshal is supplying. And as we come to the door, I'm making this public, so you won't say, what are they doing? Well, it's just a couple of areas this time. The fire marshal's office has been doing this program since 2012. We have installed 50 to 75 since they started that then. This is the first time we've done the canvassing alongside with the fire marshal's office. So, just so the public is aware, November 23rd is a Saturday morning, for three or four hours that morning, our fire trucks will be in a couple of areas in town offering smoke alarms. And it's been pretty good, since 2012, they've installed, they've put out over 200,000 smoke alarms in the state, and they've documented 279 so far, saves where nobody got hurt or died in those fires because a smoke alarm went off at that area, because they keep up with the addresses of where they've been installed, so. And this is, by the way, and I've got three minutes left, some of the volunteer departments in the county will be doing this in their areas. I know Paris was going to do some, Centerview's going to do so, it's more than just the city in Newport doing it, but it's specific areas that the state fire marshal's office, and Bailey Scott is the lady we've been working with, she has determined these are places. Should start around nine in the morning, and we should be done by lunchtime that day. So, thank you.
Thank you for the job y'all doing, the fire department, and I see Mr. Hicks back there somewhere, appreciate the job every department does, Mr. Dockery, I love you. Okay, now, I think you said you just want to speak, is that correct? Tell them what your name is and what your purpose is, okay?
My name is Tammy Allen, and I purchased my dad's house when he passed away. And the people next door have a trailer, and they moved in another trailer, okay? The county or the city one gave them one year to move the old one out, okay? They didn't. It's been five years, okay? The boy raises fighting roosters, and they use the old trailer as a storage, you know, and a chicken coop, okay? Okay, that house is overrun with rats. I'm not kidding.
What street do you live on, Tammy?
It's going to cost me four grand.
What street do you live on?
On 4X Road.
On what?
4X Road.
Okay, okay.
Okay, it's going to cost me $4,000 to get the underbelly of that house, my house, fixed, because I'm going to have to have it all torn out, because the rats have peed and urinated and implicated all over, okay? It's even clawing through. I need some help.
Would you like to?
Mark's been over, responsible.
Okay, they're working on that now, is that correct?
Yeah, but that's not doing nothing about the rat problem, they're moving out the junk, they're moving out the junk, but it's pushing all the rats out of there, because, you know, they've got nowhere to go, they've got nothing else to eat, so they're going to the neighbors.
We'll do what we can do, that's, Mr. Robson, whatever you can do, maybe get some rat poison or do something.
Well, it's not like I call Oregon, Oregon's going to charge me $4,000 to fix the problem, to fix it, and that's just to kill them out from under my house. That's not, I don't have $4,000 to put out for that. I need to see if I can get some help to fix this.
Mr. Robson, you work with it?
I need some help. I mean, these are not white rats, they're that long, honest to God, and they're in, my daughter's pregnant, and that urine and feces and stuff is harmful to an unborn child.
Tim, what you done, Mr. Robson, to help this situation?
Yes, the property is one of the Greg family, Haskell Graves family, you all know him?
Yeah, I've heard of it, I've heard of it.
I talked to the son, son's wife, and the father who moved that trailer in. It's heard me that the son was going to disassemble that single wide that was left there. And over the years, like she said, I have asked him why it's not gone. They've taken out the insides of it, and then they created a chicken coop out of it. I said, they don't know, it's supposed to be removed. The last thing that I understood from the father was that it will be demolished, the storage building that they put in without a permit was going to be moved, and that the rats are not their problem, not their fault. I don't know if y'all know about that drainage that goes down through there and then crosses cliff wood.
Let me ask you something, Mr. Robson, instead of just giving a little detail on for either one of you, why don't we sit down, if it's not done by the next time, let us know? We're working on that, not just your property, there's a lot of property, it's in the city that we're working on that same situations. And I feel like we're trying to get some stuff done, is that correct, Mr. Feencham?
Yes, we've already, we've hired a coach enforcement officer, he has begun creating files on our, these long-term properties such as this, that have been let go for years, and he, I've already looked at his files, he's already created some pretty extensive files on these properties, documenting what's been done in the past, what's currently going on now, and he's going to be going around and giving them a warning, giving them a deadline, and if that deadline is not met, he's going to have them in city court in front of the judge.
I believe you'll see a difference in what's been tried to be done now, so, why don't we just work on that? There's no use.
One other thing I need to express, there is a channel that comes up from that river, there was a major rat problem, warps rats coming out on the north street. And then I think street department put grates up and some kind of screening and poison, tried to stop that. I don't know what's underground up there, but the Gragues have told me over and over that there's a pathway that goes up through there, that the rats off the river come through there. And they, one of them, Bobby, I think is his name, said he was down the road toward the bottom. We saw a wave of rats coming out through there.
Discuss that later. We got it, thank you, buddy.
I'll, I don't, this property is not on grants start-out list, I'll talk to him tomorrow, we'll get this one.
We'll work with you, try to help you the way we can, okay?
All right, I do appreciate it. Like I said, I'm on disability right now, and I'm not working, and it's really.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Somebody else back in the back coming that's wanting to speak? Ms. Butler, who was you? Who wanted to go next?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead, then you'll be after our chair.
Hello, I'm Kim Gregg, my husband is Paul Gregg. We just recently met with the planning commission about the positive changes that are happening on River Street, and we have asked them if it would be possible if we changed the name River Street and River Road to Water's Edge. They suggested that we come to you for approval, and so that's where we are, that's why I'm here today. And also, during the meeting at the planning commission, someone recommended that we might include the two properties that the city owns on East Main, and then the building that now the Buckners own on East Main, and make that whole area from, it'll start from 380 East Main, and then pick up at 424 River Street and go all the way to the end, which is River Road 690. I have written letters prior to the planning commission meeting, and written letters prior to this meeting. And then we have a public forum scheduled for the 14th, for the people to come in to discuss that, that was in the letter. There are some people here in the audience today that will be affected with this, I think they're all good. We've had one, I've had one in conversation that is not in agreeance, it's the Buckners that bought the property and with the hair salon that they're putting in, and they have purchased a lot of items, they said already with the main street address, and I understand that, that they might not want to change. So, two options would be to start it where the city owns, and we discussed doing a historical marker there, and then carrying it on down, or starting it at the 424 River Street, which is the Lanes property, and they've actually contacted the city previously to get their name changed from River Street, so they're all for it, start there at that property and go on down to River Road. So since the last letter, we've had no, nobody contending it. I don't know if anybody's here, you know, that certainly they need to speak, yeah.
You want to let her get through first?
Yeah, let me finish first.
Let her get through first, and then you go.
So, I've approached the 911, there is no Water's Edge Street in the city at this point, so that would be no problem. All we need is approval from city council, they would notify dispatch, and that would, that ball would be taken up by them. Same thing with the electric company, and we spoke with the post office, and the postmaster actually wrote us a letter that they're, are full for it, whatever we need to do, just come into them, they have packets that we can give to each individual, and they can file for their own property change. And just so you know, there's 56 properties on River Street, River Road, East Main that will be affected. There are 34 owners. All the numbers, River Street, River Road will remain the same, just the name will change to Water's Edge. The East Main, which would be two city properties and the one Buckner property, they would have to change their number as well. Let's see, I think that's all the information. So, as of now, this meeting was set up to introduce it to you, council, to see if you have any questions for us, or if there's anything else we need to do to make sure we do it correctly, that everybody's satisfied. And then the public forum is for people, the same thing, and for people in the community to bring their concerns. So, if there's any questions that I haven't, that I've forgotten that you guys have, that I can answer you.
I do have a question.
Sure.
Out of the 34 owners on River Street and River Road, how many out of that 34 have said that they're good with the name change?
I've had, I've spoken to several of them, let's see. The ones personally, I'll just name them off, this will help you, the Rodriguezes spoke with, yes, Roger Miller, yes, us, the Gragues, yes, the Lanes, yes. These people live on River Road, but their address is Shane's Way, they're, yes. Roger Henderson, yes. 80% that we've spoken to personally. The others we haven't spoken to personally.
Okay.
But they all have the two letters, every owner.
But there's been about four different families, four or five, that you've actually spoken with and gotten approval?
There's one, two. About six, I guess, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure. You're welcome. At least six, Paulie, can you think of any more? Seven, I can keep adding, seven, I'm thinking of more, eight, so eight, no, I'm thinking of more, yeah, six.
Thank you, Tina.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Hello, everyone, I am Angie Buckner, and we just purchased the property that Ms. Sherry was talking about, but I would like to be left out of that road name change, I think it's a beautiful name and I love it, but we are relocating a hair salon, and there's eight of us altogether. We have a lot of customers, we've already been telling them that our address is East Main Street. I've already got all of my documentation, I have to fill out an application for a change of address with the state of Tennessee through the Department of Cosmetology, and that, I had to pay fees for that. And I've already had to mail that in, because there's a waiting game before you can be inspected to even open the doors, so we have to set up everything, get it all finished, everything has to be set up and ready for the inspection before we can open, which is, I hope, is December the 2nd. So I had to get the ball rolling on that. So I would love to be excluded from this name change. It would affect, like with GPS, customers trying to find our new location, it would really create a lot of problem for us. So, thank you.
Thank you. And we got anybody else that was wanting to speak? Appreciate everybody, appreciate your attendance, I will make a motion when the meeting be adjourned, I hear second.
I'll second it.
Is that in your second, all in favor say aye. Aye. I've got it.